Hello, everyone. It's two o'clock, so let's get started. Welcome to the meeting of the Santa Barbara County School Board, July 7th, 2022. And Lena is here for our translation interpretation and would like to say a few words.
Thank you so much. Buenos dias, good afternoon. Always to provide access, we have interpretation between English and Spanish. So if anybody who wants to listen to the meeting in Spanish, I invite you to come pick up the device. Buenos dias, como siempre para proporcionar access and respite, tenemos interpretaciones de inglés y español. Así que alguien quiere escuchar la reunión en español, les invito a que vengan a la telefónica. Thank you as always.
Thank you, Lena. Okay, Lena, go.
Sure. Mrs. Cardy, here. Mrs. Davie, here. Mrs. DeWort, here. Mrs. Ross, here. Mrs. Howell, here. Mr. Porter?
In prison.
Oh. Of course. I have no changes to the agenda. One, we do, we do. And before we do, we have, that just happened.
Oh, okay.
Would you like to go? Would you like to go back and conduct the pledge of allegiance?
Can I miss it?
Yes, we can do it right now.
We can do it right now. It's on the bottom of that page.
Perfect course, you should do it. We're going to do the pledge of allegiance, of course.
Right, as we begin our pledge, just remember that we just celebrated the Fourth of July and the independence of our nation. But let's remember that freedom is not a destination, it is a process. And every single day, let us promise in our lives to make this a more free nation. So please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And thank you for reminding me. Absolutely. We actually, it's really less of a change to the agenda. We wanted to pass out materials. We might make this, we might make this announcement once again before the inter-district transfer hearing. But we wanted you to have additional meeting materials. Is this for? Yeah, this is for the rest of the audience. They don't have that? Okay, that's right. Okay, start. What I was hoping to do is give an explanation, but instead of passing this out and having it at your places without explanation, asking Austin if he'd share with you why you're receiving this now.
Yeah, this, this was submitted last night or yesterday, I believe, from attorneys for the deleted Unified School District. It's because it's coming a little late, you all have discretion about whether or not you want to consider it. So we can talk about it more when the IDT comes up later in the agenda. But that's just enough if you have it, if you want to consider it later.
Does this end with you?
I don't believe so.
So we'll revisit this again, the materials for the families, once the IDT begins, inter-district transfer hearing begins. But again, we didn't want to pass out the materials without you knowing why. Anyway, thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, on President and Board comments, I would like to say to Kimmy, it may be five o'clock tomorrow, but you will get a bio from me. And just a reminder to everyone on the board that would like to submit a bio, it's due. Did you say bye tomorrow or by the end of the day tomorrow?
I do agree tomorrow.
Okay.
If you can't get to tomorrow, we can talk, but that was the goal.
Okay.
It's early next week, that's fine too.
Okay. Oh dear, you're giving us more room.
Okay, tomorrow is bye.
And we have an introduction of a new staff member. Is she here?
Nicole is here. We actually have introduced Nicole Evanson previously, but now that Debbie Brack has officially departed our organization, the retired week, and Nicole actually began a few months ago as our Administrator of Internal Services, but I wanted to reintroduce Nicole again. So welcome back. Nicole. And we actually have in Bridgette's division, Shannon York here. Bridgette, if you wouldn't mind giving an introduction that would be very nice.
Yes, Shannon York just started with us on Tuesday. She is in the new position of the Educational Services Support Leader and will be existing in the division with lots of things that come her way. So El Chap, charter schools, the loss of preservation, and ongoing family care project. There's a lot of projects. She comes from Dos Pueblos High School, so I think it was the AP there. And we're happy to have her.
Welcome. So AP is Sister Purcell, that's right. And I wanted the board to know too, that during closed session, what we've asked our legal counsel related to who can stay, it's staff who might be able to support in case there's a need for questions. And so Renee Wheeler will stay, Bridgette Paulbitts would stay, and Shannon York would stay. So I wanted you to know why these individuals will be staying for closed sessions as well. Okay. Okay, great, thank you.
All right, other comments from the board?
I have one. I want to apologize for being missing. I truly was missing in action June 9th. Wasn't at the meeting, did not even at the time realize I wasn't, was supposed to be here. And as a compliment, Anna, I was, became aware that we had a meeting that I missed. But Anna's note, it was so gracious. It wasn't like, where the heck are we? It was, there was. We had a full form today, we're able to conduct business. Haven't I did? It was so gracious. So I have no excuse. I do have an explanation. I think this is my, is my third absence in life. A long time, twenty plus years. I had COVID, but I didn't know I had COVID. So I did this event in San Francisco, really felt not very good Monday and Tuesday. It was sure it was because of this event. On Wednesday, when I explained to a doctor friend why my voice sounded like, I think I said a shame-smoking frog, he literally got in the car, not many doctors make office calls. He rode to my office, handed me a test, and said, go home and take this test. Took the test, I had COVID. Immediately started thinking everyone in my office, etc. So I took whatever the term is, stayed quarantined. But I didn't leave. I was either outside or in a separate bedroom, fearing my wife would kind of infect it, but she did not. Anyway, I was, I didn't feel horrible, but I clearly didn't have all my mental capacity. I apologize for not being here again. I think someone just took something wrong just to see how gracious Anna can be and thus.
She always is gracious.
So I apologize for this. Not sure.
Well, are your faculties all about you?
They are. I'm a hundred and five percent. I'm over.
Any other comments? Okay. Then public comments, do we have any public comments today? No? Okay. And we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Well, thank you very much. It's a good afternoon and great to see everybody. But my report is in your booklet. And so I'd love to see if there's any questions that any of the board members have. As you're looking through those again, I do have two items that I wanted to bring forward in terms of updates, Los Prietos Voice Camp and the Federal Impact Aid items. And in addition, I'd like to add just a few more, just about three. So let me first stop and see if there's questions related to the report I submitted to the board. Okay. Then the, a few updates, and then I'll get to the Los Prietos Voice Camp and Federal Impact Aid. The first one is great news. The Departments of SBCO, the Career Technical Education, along with the Early Care and Education Departments together, submitted a grant, an opportunity for a grant for apprenticeships for early care and education. And we just heard that we received it. And I would like to ask Bridgette to say just a first word about what it is. It's brand new, it's never before provided in the state, and we're one of the first recipients of this apprenticeship. For, yeah, so Bridgette, if you could say a little bit more.
So we, we applied for the California Apprenticeship Initiative Grant. We were awarded $500,000 for five years total, my representative told me for the five-year period. It'll be to support 25 apprenticeships in ECE. So to earn credits for their associate teacher position or teacher position or even supervisor. The apprenticeship, apprenticeships are covered in the cost of tuition books. And then it also allows for paid increases at they for additional units for so-called positions. So we're really excited, as Susan said, it's the first of its kind for SBCO. And we're working with the Division of Apprenticeship Standards to also register. So one of one registration will allow us, we'd be in the midyear, to have the distribution of apprenticeships. So so really excited and we expect to find one in October. I hope, I suppose one other thing that hasn't been heard is that we also received a support for this grant of $100,000 from Santa Barbara Foundation to also harden their list and support.
Thank you, Bridgette. And so what it would look like are individuals who are already in, correct, I mean, excuse me. Individuals who are already employed by SBCO in our early care and education division and in different classifications. And as they're working, will be able to go to school, that's what the apprenticeship grant will pay for, and so that they can advance and improve years here at SBCO in early care and education. And so they can accelerate in their career, earn more money. And what we're looking at is to expand it externally as well, so that others in, in private industry can also apply to these grants. It's about advancing careers and earning, earning more and receiving more credits. So excited. Yeah, so wanted to let you know. That's announcement number one. Announcement number two. So after we had submitted this agenda to you and information, we received some new information from the state. They just released, the California just released what they're calling a teacher assignment data. So teacher assignment data. And what they're doing is publicizing for all the schools and all the districts how teachers are assigned, if they're aligned, if they're all using words, out of compliance, in compliance. It is, it has been in the works since about 2019, when legislation was passed for the Commission on Teacher Credentialing to launch this kind of website. And so this year is the first year, just this week, June 30th, I think, is when it was released across the state. And I'm going to look at my notes because it's that new. There's some phrasing and labels that come with this reporting. Labels that include ineffective teachers listing, incomplete assignments, out of field assignments, or that they're cleared. And so these are labels that actually the federal side of the House has provided California to use. It doesn't really sync with what we do in California yet. And so what happened was, every school district, including all county offices, report their teachers in assignments. But it was difficult to choose which label to enter them into because we don't use those labels. So the data this year is, is not quite accurate yet. And so we, I wanted to report that to you because the statewide data has already been publicized. I've even seen an article that talks about teachers being misassigned in California. And it's not quite right yet. So part of the not quite right yet is the labels that we are to submit to don't really sync with our labels yet. Two, the literal human who was entering data didn't really know, gosh, where do I put Maggie? Where do I put Michelle? It just doesn't fit quite right, so the data might not be quite accurate. And we are actually have, the California allows us to have some local options that says if we meet this criteria, the teachers meet the criteria for the state. And that's not recognized by the system either. We're going to get there, I think, as a state. But because we operate juvenile court and community schools, where we have one or two teachers teaching multiple assignments, and we have a very vulnerable population, county offices of education's data, including ours, will look very, very far off from being assigned correctly. So I wanted to make sure that you had the heads up, that that's what the data will look like. We are working as a team to ensure that it is aligned, it'll get better and better in terms of not only being aligned, but being reported correctly, so that when the reports come out, you'll see accurate information. So Mari's been working on that time, Tom Heidup, our manager of credentials, Alex, working on that, Bridgette in our juvenile court and community schools. So wanted to give you that information, just as far as, here's the report. We're, California Y is working on making it accurate. See if there's questions. I wanted to keep it about an inch deep on this one, rather than give you all the information right now. But I'm happy to, I'm happy to ask our team to provide more information for you. Yes, Mr. Porter?
So is it wholly about credentialing? Or is it something qualitative, like you're just on a regular teacher?
It's about credentialing, yes.
So it's just certification?
It's certification. And what this label means federally and what it means California are not quite matched up yet, so that's great. I'm looking over this Tom to make sure that I answered that correctly.
Absolutely.
Okay, good. All right, make sure. Great, other questions from you on that? All right, anything that you'd like to add, Tom, Mari, or Bridgette, that I, that you think is important for us to relay at this time? Perfect!
Is there a, is there a stated deadline for getting there?
No.
No, I mean, I, I, go ahead.
It's a work in progress because it does have to align with some federal pieces. And so that's where, um, it's.
We, I did, I did leave out though, that the information will soon be reported on the dashboard. And so as we get dashboard information in 2023, this will, it'll start to get publicized that way as well. So what that will look like, we're not sure. We also report on local indicators. We're not exactly sure how this will all align. It's brand new, but it's coming. Okay, that was number two. Number three, wanted to let you all know that we're working on, again, optional visits for the board to attend and visit Dos Pueblos, the Juvenile Justice Center, as well as Fitzgerald Community School in North County, as well as the North County Office. We'll make sure to give you advance notice. I think having an optional date would be, or excuse me, multiple dates for you to choose would be helpful. It'll, one, perhaps align with calendars as well. And two, might limit the number of individuals going in at that one time. So we're working on that, and we'll either report it out back at an board meeting or email those dates to you. But wanted to let you know what, what we're working on. At this time, we're not looking at visiting Los, at the Los Prietos Voice Camp because there's transitions earlier, as you all know. I'll get to that next. So wanted to let you know the visits. In terms of the Los Prietos Voice Camp, there was a question around any changes, any new updates? There, there really are no new changes or updates. I will say that probation, county probation has hosted some forums, opportunities for the community to participate and engage. That's just a beginning piece. It is intended to, to ask about the new services when it, when the Los Pueblos shifts from Los Prietos to the Juvenile Justice Center, getting input around the programs and services there. The schedule is still, as far as we know, set for ending in June of 2023 in terms of the transition and opening then at the Juvenile Justice Center in 2023. We have asked and we're seeking to be very, very collaborative on the educational portion. We don't have much to report right now. There, I believe probation, we understand, and Bridgette attended one of the input sessions, but we understand that they're seeking a project manager to ensure that the transition goes really smoothly. That person hasn't been hired yet. So like I said, not much new information. Bridgette, anything more to fill in at this point?
Susan, do you know the forums, have those been actively attended and participating in?
I, I asked Chief Heitman about the most recent one. Bridgette also attended that one, so maybe you can say how many people you think were in. Oh, Renee with her tech.
There was like 57 people on the Zoom counter, but there were a number, a number of thousands in that, that room. So when you talk about community, that, yeah, 35 probably makes sense.
Okay. If there's another forum that is announced, we'll make sure to send that information out to the board.
Great.
Okay. And then finally, we'll get to the Federal Impact Aid. This is a topic that when we last meeting brought forward, the Forest Reserve funds, the fact that we received them, how we're going to allocate them. Mr. Porter asked about Impact Aid and American Indian Reserve land, as well as Vandenberg Air Force Base land there. So I've asked Bill Ridgway to provide a quick report on the Federal Impact Aid, which districts receive it, the information and background there. So we'll leave it with that. Bill, thank you.
Thanks very much. Yes, Federal Impact Aid. We do have three LEAs in our county.
Excuse me, Bill. I'm going to ask you if you could come to the podium because we're having audio recording and that's where the speaker is. Yes, thank you. Sorry, pardon my interruption.
Now I feel like I ought to have a presentation. Oh, well. All right, we have three LEAs in our county that are receiving Impact Aid from the federal government. And it arrives to them, interestingly enough, directly from the federal government. So you talk with the California Department of Education about it, and they say, we have nothing to do with this. And so it really is separate from any funding that comes from the state or really from local property taxes. So I'll, I'll tell you who the three LEAs are as, as we kind of work through this. There are two main areas of Federal Impact Aid. The first, we'll, we'll just call Federal Property Impact Aid. And that's to help make up for the reduction in property taxes that come because land designated in a district's boundaries is federal and therefore non-taxable. In order to qualify for that, you have to meet some requirements. First of all, the land within your boundaries. Well, let me tell you what types of, of facilities and land we're talking about. It's national parks and grasslands, national laboratories, and also includes VA hospitals, Army Corps of Engineering projects, military testing grounds, and environmental waste sites are examples of the kinds of federal properties included. In order to qualify, the federal government had to acquire that land after 1938. It had to count for at least 10% of the assessed value of the district's total assessed value at the time it was acquired. And it could not be exchanged for other federal property. And revenue from federal activities on the property could not be substantial. So interestingly enough, there are only 14 LEAs in the entire state that are receiving this money. Long Hope Unified School District is one of those. So very, very few districts. The dollar amount that they received with the last set of payments was $620,000, which sounds like a decent amount of money, and it is. But here's the interesting thing, these payments are not fully funded. They are deficits, surprise, surprise. If Long Hope received the full amount that is due to them, it would have been $9.1 million. So it would have been significant. So $620,000 is very helpful for a large district, but not anything like what full funding would yield. So that is the Federal Property Impact Aid. The second category, we'll call that basic funding for federally connected students. So there are, I'm sorry if this is going into too much detail. I'll try to kind of move through this pretty quickly. In order for a district to qualify for this, they have to educate at least 400 federally connected students. And, and that's 400 ADA, is what it amounts to, their total ADA. Or federally connected students have to represent at least 3% of the district's total ADA, one or the other. But then there are requirements in order to be termed a federally connected student. And I'll just briefly go through those. So if you are a student who resides on federal property with a parent or guardian who is employed by the federal government, or it can be civilian employment as well, then you qualify. If you reside as a student on Indian lands, you qualify. If you reside in federal low-income housing, you, you also are eligible. And then this is an eligibility for a parent. If, if the parent is on active duty in the uniformed services, but does not reside on federal property, then that is a qualification. Or if the parent resides on federal property or works on federal property. But then there's a caveat. The caveat is that these types of students can only be counted if they comprise 1,000 or more, or 10% of the district's ADA. Okay, all that? So the other, so Long Hope is the only one that received the first type of funding, federal property funding. Long Hope also receives the second type of funding, and two other LEAs do as well. College Elementary School District and the Amazonita Charter School, which is authorized by the Long Hope Unified School District, also receives this federally connected funding. And just so you know, the dollar amount for the college school district, the last set of payments they received was about $21,000. And then on top of that, they received some disability funding as well, of about $2,300. And that is for federally connected students who have disabilities.
I don't think, I don't think it would have been that much.
So the, the Long Hope School District received $507,000 of federally connected student funding and $65,000 on top of that for disability. And then to need a charter, received $103,000 and $10,000 to recognize students who have disabilities. So gives you an idea of what the impact is in our county. Again, none of that is fully funded, so it would be much more if it were. Any questions?
Is that an annual amount?
It is an annual amount, and it changed annually.
Yeah.
So that's a million dollars a year for Long Hope.
It is, yeah, it's $1.1 million in total for Long Hope. So it's, you know, it's not a small amount for that district.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you very much. Appreciate it very much. And appreciate the question, Mr. Porter from last month. And I wanted to say one final piece is that changing subject is board policy, board policy committee. The full board has voted to adapt one or two board policies back to board policy committee. And for a while now, we've been ad hoc meeting and it's just being responsive as well as proactive, trying to get our board policies updated. And so Mr. Burr and I, he's the, or Mr. Burr is the Chair of the Board Policy Committee, connected briefly, and talked about putting two meetings on the calendar this year, just to get through some of the, through that, remanded board policies and new laws. And then in the future, starting in 2023, having, setting on, on the board's calendar some quarterly meetings for the Board Policy Committee, working on new board policies. for the Board Policy Committee, working on new board policies, renewing some of the board policies, putting those on that ongoing calendar. And of course, removing, we don't need them, but setting those dates aside now so that we have them for your calendars as well. So I wanted to let you know what we're working towards. And that's my report. Thank you, Senator. Thanks very much. You're up to date now. All right. Next on the agenda is a presentation of our countywide mental health grant. Fantastic. And, oh, there you are, Mary Ellen.
There I am.
On cue, our wonderful executive director of Children and Family Resource Services, who's overseeing this first-time-ever grant that we received in collaboration with Behavioral Wellness. And it was a really large grant that we received. We have some good updates and information about that, too. Wanted to give the board a report. There's been so much, I think, necessary, important focus on health resources for students at schools. And we are one part of a big picture in Santa Barbara County. Couldn't think of a big part of the picture as well. Mary Ellen, you're doing some phenomenal work. Really appreciate that you're here, Mary Ellen, to present. Bridget, is there anything else that you'd like to say before we?
You said so lovingly.
Okay.
The work is a hard word, and you still have a hard word to use about this topic today, but we actually don't. But have been doing phenomenal work in scary and excited for you to get an update.
Thank you. All right.
Good afternoon, everyone. Sorry I have to wear masks. I'm under a notice and required to wear masks until July twelfth, and then I will celebrate when it comes off. So I can't smile, but I'm smiling underneath. And I really appreciate the opportunity. As Susan said, I'm Mary Ellen Reese. I've been with SB CEO for fifteen years. A couple of board members I've presented to you in the past. It's been a year since then. I serve as the executive director for Children and Family Resource Services, which is one of the three departments at SB CEO that also operates as a five oh one C three organization. And thank you for giving me this time to share about the newest program that we have at Health Linkages in this Children and Family Resource Services Department. And we are under the Education Services Division led by Bridget Plavos. We call it MHSSA because it is funded through the state of California's Mental Health Student Services Act. The state considers this a medium-sized county, so this was our allocation. And the concept was developed by the state prior to COVID. The grant was written prior to COVID. A lot has changed since then. Funding is about a million dollars a year, which sounds like a lot, but it can only staff a small team of clinicians and navigators compared to the potential need of twenty districts and almost seventy thousand students, especially as we know the numbers of people needing health support have increased and the acuity of needs has also increased. We are excited to share the news that we will receive additional million dollars. We just found out about this a couple of days ago, so that's great news. These are the partners involved in the program. It's an unusual project because it brings together multiple partners. We provide the navigators as part of our Health Linkages program. B-Well provides the management and the clinicians. The other organizations help support the work, and the school districts are the recipients. B-Well acts as the fiduciary of the grant from the state, but it is a collaboration, is equal partners with SB CEO and B-Well. Normally Christina Lombardi, who's my counterpart at B-Well, would be presenting with me, but as you know, sometimes the pandemic ruins the best of our plans. As example, I have a mask. Thank you. I want to say thank you to Susan and Bridget for writing this grant and having the vision to bring these services to our students. They both continue to serve and work with us on the executive leadership team for the program. And that's along with the director of the County Behavioral Wellness Department. The focus of our program is on prevention and early intervention. These are the goals that are straight from our agreement, the contract that was developed by B-Well and SB CEO. So we aim to increase awareness. We provide education to reduce stigma, increase collaboration and communication so we can improve services and expand mental health support in schools. These are the specific outcomes our grant proposes to accomplish. As I said, it is about prevention, getting access to services, providing outreach and education so that we may prevent severe and disabling mental illness. We hope to reduce the stigma and discrimination that's associated with mental illness and also associated with looking for help, asking for help. These are special populations that we are especially focusing on to prevent negative outcomes for them. They're listed right there. So again, it's not a treatment program. It's a prevention program. It's getting access for people and it's helping to make it more normalized that they be able to ask for help. These are the districts that are currently receiving services and the schools within those districts. I'll run a bit of a printiment so you can get a little bit of a pardon. These are the districts starting in twenty-two, twenty-three. Orchid and Santa Maria have chosen pilots school for next year. And we will have a dedicated navigator with work experience in the San Luis Valley that will take referrals from the valley. We have also met with Cold Springs and Carpe Maria and Longhope Unified, who has very robust services in place. Probably have more of a plan a little bit than. I wanted to give you some numbers, even though we just launched last year. I like to know who we are reaching, how much work is being done, and what are some of the preliminary results. This gives you a picture of who we are serving. The ages served this far are primarily middle school. You see thirty-eight percent in the gray. High school, thirty-three percent in yellow. Lower elementary, eight percent was served as in the blue. And upper elementary age was twenty-three percent in the orange. The state also asks us to report on ethnicity. Overwhelmingly, the demographic served so far has been Hispanic or Latinx. We started in North County with pilots in Santa Maria and Guadalupe. Both areas have a higher Latinx population than some other areas. We would expect to serve more non-Hispanics as we expand into other communities. Countywide, Latinx makes up about sixty-five percent of the students, and we had about eighty-five percent referrals to KUSS. These are the types of referrals. Overwhelmingly, eighty-eight percent of all referral work was doing referrals for some type of outpatient mental health services. And blue is forty-four percent. Those were referrals to outpatient county mental health, specifically to B-Well, referred to them. Yellow, thirty-three percent. Those were referrals for outpatient mental health for people that had insurance, that were private insurance plans or private pay. Eleven percent is CBO. CBOs are nonprofit, local, community-based organizations, such as Family Service Agency, San Luis Valley People Helping People, K data, and Calm. Other was anything that didn't fall into the categories given to us by state. In this case, it included cases that went back to school to use existing school-based resources or those did not accept the referral to KUSS. We did not have anywhere the referrals were considered unsuccessful. Meaning, actually failed to do this. These are the results of what happened with all the referrals received by the school district. As I said, we didn't have any that were unsuccessful. We had some that were called other. So five percent in the gray, these are the families that we were unable to get a response from. We did not make connection. We tried to call at least three times, different times a day, and they messaged us. If we are unable to connect with them, we reach back after school to see if we're able to be able to meet them in person. The blue, seventy-four percent. Successful means that they were actually connected to the services. This is significantly more than just making a referral to someone. This is giving education to a parent, support while they're waiting to be connected. It's not just giving them a number. Really, really connected with them. I'll share a story later, a little bit. So the others, the twenty-one percent, include those who did not actually need or receive referrals. This includes students who receive services in groups. So we serve them in groups. We did a lot of groups at Fistero, for example. So we didn't refer them out to anywhere else. So that's why they fall into the category of that. Here are our success stories. I have two to share with you. The first one is a practitioner named Sophia. Sophia is a fourteen-year-old girl in the eighth grade. The family has private insurance. The referral came from the school district for linkage to mental health services due to Sophia recently being diagnosed with an eating disorder by her pediatrician. Sophia suffered a traumatic incident in December, and since that incident, incident has continued to lose weight. She was also hospitalized for medical reasons in a Northern California hospital for treatment, twice. They hospitalized for two to three weeks. The health navigator and clinician assigned to the case have supported the family with education about their daughter's mental health diagnosis, expectations, and processes. We linked them to a family support group for eating disorders and educated them on options for services and understanding levels of mental health care. Sophia was also referred to a psychiatrist that specializes in working with children. At every step, we were available for any questions parents had regarding the treatment their child was receiving. Sophia is now at a residential facility that specializes in eating disorders. We collaborated with the school and the district to assist with continuing recommendations for academic support to deal with absences and also to start the IEP Individualized Education Plan. Here's a quote from one of our navigators. "But of all the assistance we gave, the most rewarding part of my role was giving the family the emotional support they needed and reassuring them that their child is receiving the best care possible." I have another story. Lou Van Marabel are the fictitious names. This Hispanic family has four sisters, ages eighteen, thirteen, eleven, and six. The referral was for two sisters, eleven and thirteen, from the same school district. The family fled Mexico, taking refuge from an uncle who murdered their father. And on top of that, was now searching for the mother and the children. The eighteen-year-old sister was a senior in high school who was working two jobs while attending school full-time. The referral to the MHSSA program was for linkage to mental health services for trauma as the two sisters witnessed their father being murdered. The family was also in need of additional resources due to struggling with other problem issues, such as housing, food insecurity, transportation, and childcare. But a clinician conducted comprehensive assessments for both sisters, who met the criteria for behavioral wellness, behavioral wellness level of services. The clinician linked the family to the county's Spirit Wraparound Program. The health navigator assisted in helping the mother obtain her social security number, submitting a housing application for Section Eight, and supportive housing for local farm workers. The mother and eldest sister received other financial resources. The health navigator also helped the family obtain bus passes for transportation, weekly food donations, and referrals for other community supports. The team worked with the Spirit Parent Partner for continuity of care and support while ensuring that the service linkages were successful and stable housing was secured. Here's a summary of the trainings and outreach that have already taken place this past year. So mental health first aid, training on suicide assessment and prevention, trauma and care. And I have some pictures to share of the tabling that we did at school events. Most of our work is with older students. This was at a TK, K parent night. We had tables, and then we gave a presentation in the picture on the right. This one, we were invited to by Pioneer Valley to attend a special event they had. We joined with other organizations to provide information and outreach. These are the next steps that we're doing. So we're going to hire another point five clinician was built into the grant. Now we have the additional funding. It's been hard, it's difficult to hire clinicians countywide. This has been a challenge for all providers of mental health. But a part-time position was hard to fill. Now we're going to be able to hire a full-time position for that instead of part-time and an additional one that because of the extra million dollars, which is really exciting. And we fulfill those traditional open navigator spots as we continue to assess district needs. We have not had difficulty hiring actually at SB CEO, but want to be strategic in placement. And Health Linkages opened up a new office at SB CEO's North County Headquarters on Farnell. We have three navigators there, and we have one staff in Longhope and one in Santa Barbara. Two of the staff are specifically working with students and families experiencing homelessness. These are the future group topics that the people are working on during the summer. I think they already tried out the drum circle at Mrs. Gerald. I wanted to get pictures, but it was already over. And these are expansion plans. The heart of this whole project has been about partnership and collaboration. These are some of the next level of partnership outreach that we're doing. We'll meet with those major nonprofit organizations that are providing mental health services, such as Family Service Agency, Calm, K data, San Luis Valley, and People Helping People. We plan to create joint partnerships with U-Well to do campaigns in the school and establish closer relationships with private sector partners to further connections between students with private insurance or private pay situations. And we want to formalize collaboration so that we can increase parent training and workshops. U-Well is a nonprofit and sponsors this directory on their website. This is just a screenshot to show you what we use. And they're focused on increasing access for youth needing help with mental health needs and reducing the stigma associated with reaching out for help. We train all the districts and schools on how to use this and to keep up to date through our Behavioral Health Linkages Team monthly meetings with navigators. Sometimes people like to have a sticky note with numbers of who to call. But the problem is that staff come and go and programs come and go. So we want people to be educated and everything is available. And lastly, this is why staff love working with this program, making a difference for our students. This is why we do what we do to help youth in our community. And here's my contact information, and Christine is as well. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions about the work we're doing. And thank you so much for your time and attention. Thank you for making it possible for us to do this important work and to bring more resources to the district.
Please explain to me how this works at a school, not at a district, Chris. You should hear of it. Schools are painfully ashamed of the school psychologists and the normal families that start the special education population, as are the school nurses. So who at the school actually is a part of this process?
It does depend a lot, district by district. So some districts already have liaisons in place. They already have clinicians on campus. And we don't want to duplicate what they're doing, but we want to supplement where it's needed. So in some cases where we have a B-Well clinician, we'll work with the school and take direct referrals, and the B-Well therapist can actually do those assessments with the kids. And then our, like in North County especially, all schools in Guadalupe, all the middle schools in Santa Maria were really active, receiving the referrals from them. An example with Longhope, where we really haven't started yet. Longhope has funding that they have a clinician in each school site and a navigator and a liaison.
In the school?
Yes. I know. Yeah. So this, the project was created prior to COVID. But since COVID, there's been a lot of money that have come out to schools to spend on mental health. The problem has been all of the vacancies, not being able to hire enough people. That's really been a problem. Where the navigation is a great thing is that the navigators will work with the family while they're on a waitlist, while they're waiting to get help. A lot of times when people ask for help, that's kind of their window of opportunity. And if they get turned down then, sometimes they just kind of give up or they disappear. So what we have is ways for us to continue to do education support while they're waiting. And with B-Well, now that we already have another million dollars, we'll be able to hire two more clinicians. B-Well should be able to hire those clinicians. That shouldn't be a problem. Not when we have them.
Paige three, of course, a great presentation. A lot of information. Page three is, or I'm sorry, page six is districts receiving the services. And then the, oh, it was, I played it wrong, but it's four districts that are starting.
Right.
So I think it's a total of seven or eight. And we have, there are other districts, or the other districts have their own method of dealing with this.
Yeah, many do, right.
So they don't. They're serving their students in their own way without needing the.
That is the case with some districts. So all of the districts opted into it. For some districts, one what we'll be doing is the training and having a student go out and do suicide prevention and assessment training with the staff.
Right.
And some, it will be doing more parent education. It may be some student groups. That's actually one of the things that Longhope is asked about. But in some cases, they really have a robust program. We don't want to get in the middle of that and have teachers and staff confused about, who do I call when I need help for something? who do I call when I need help or something. So what we've been doing is meeting very carefully with district staff. And then if schools are identified, the school staff specifically, to follow up and see what do they need at that particular site. And so we first got started in North County. So these four junior highs in Santa Maria, Bonita, both schools in Guadalupe Bank, and Fitzgerald. That's kind of where we got started for the first round, and for immediate further districts. And then we've already had plans. We're just waiting until the new school year starts for Orchid, Santa Maria Joint. We've already met with Urban Area, Cold Springs. We met with all the superintendents in the Santa's Valley. And we're following up the individual school district and schools there. And so we're excited about being able to jump into a new school year. So our first, our first year is starting kind of slow as a pilot, mostly North County.
It's the best possible answer. I mean, one could think schools don't want to deal with it or whatever, but the last is half. Well, I collided with grants, I mean, with the facts.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah.
She's taking it seriously and doing many a mother of. Thank you.
I just would like to make a comment, kind of piggyback on what Joseph. I'm thrilled that the focus is now coming to mental health issues that have been troubling in our schools. Doesn't matter whether it's grammar school or high school, all across the board. And that you're supplementing those programs that are already in place and are graciously offering support but not stepping in to take the meeting. I think it's commendable, and I can applaud it more because I think it's a very under-discussed, under-commented upon issue within the schools across the board. So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate this presentation very much as well. I had a question on page two about the community and school partnerships. Behavioral Wellness, B-Well, that's a nonprofit?
Oh, no. So that's the county, a lot of times people refer to it as county mental health.
County.
And their nickname is B-Well. So it's the County Behavioral Health Services. So this is, it's the county of Santa Barbara. And the contract was ratified by the Board of Supervisors.
Oh.
So.
Okay, YouthWell is a nonprofit?
YouthWell, yes.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, Youth, YouthWell is a nonprofit that heads up the directory, which we really love that because it's constantly new programs that happen. Like I said, all the different services on different campuses. And so by updating that, we, somebody can look for a particular age, particular type of insurance, particular location, particular type of mental health that's out there. And so we're really working together to really be able to utilize everything that's out there. It's not, it doesn't help to have a lot of services if they're all confused and nobody can find them and everyone's going over each other. So.
So, so Youth, so YouthWell was selected. Was there other nonprofits that compete with YouthWell that are RFP or how did you select?
Oh, so YouthWell was, was part of a partnership right from the beginning. So they're an unfunded partner that were part of the project. So it was just part of their mission to do it. So along with mental wellness centers. So when the grant was originally written by B-Well, Susan and Bridget, they were there kind of as consultants and partners to help bring it up, but they were not funded in the same way. So SPCO, B-Well, it's not quite, but it's about a fifty-fifty percent split on the funding.
Okay.
So you mentioned Calm and KETA.
Yeah.
And then, I was saying, was, was Aha?
We've been doing a lot of referrals for Aha in South County. Yeah.
Yeah. Is YouthWell, is that Rebecca or Rachel?
That is Rachel, yes. It is Rachel. She also serves on the leadership.
And Mary Ellen, if I can inter, within the interjected words. I, I think there's some questions regarding who, with whom we partner. And I would say, I think a response is, we, we are, we don't include, we don't exclude any. In other words, we refer out to all organizations in the county that have, that are, that a student might need to be referred to.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I want to make sure that that's true. But a part of the training for the navigators, and it's not only training that Mary Ellen and her team leads for navigators, but please, please let, let us know who else is part of the training. But part of the training is to know what are the external providers that exist in the county fully? What do they do? You know, and how much space do they have? Like seats do they have or appointments do they have so that we can refer individuals to? Because that's part of the navigation. What we don't want to do is simply say, oh, here's a list, you know, and here's what they do. We actually really need to hand off and, and ensure that they get there. And that's the in-between, the there are the partners, and the partners countywide. But the in-between where they're waiting, unfortunately, there's a waitlist. And I know many of us have experienced firsthand when you need mental wellness support to meet them now. It's very hard to wait among. So to have a navigator help you in between is really helpful. But one, one of the, the key components in, in YouthWell is a nonprofit that really brings people to the table. So it's not like a service agency. They're bringing all these external partners together so that they can be aware of the different grants, all the different support providers. Who also, the training, gets trained, like the navigators do.
Oh, the, the Behavioral Health Linkages Behavioral Wellness Team has actually people from all the different nonprofits. So YouthWell and I, we kind of got it started because we wanted to make sure that our navigators had a really good idea of what other resources were. And we also wanted a research director to stay up to date with clear information, practical from people that are out in the field that can say, oh, yeah, well supposedly there's this number to call, but that number doesn't work, or whatever the case may be, right? So all of the nonprofits that are doing mental health work, they're all part of that same monthly thing that we have, that team. So that includes people from like community health centers of the Central Coast, Santa Barbara neighborhood clinics, as I said, National Service Agency, all, all the, yeah.
Thank you. So they come together.
So we got, so in partnership, we're not, we're not partnering with them to give them the money to go do some work. But what we're finding out is what they're already wanting to do, and they get the right people there. So we're finding out if somebody has insurance. The other thing we do is if somebody does not have insurance and they're low income, we actually spend them a medical payment ourselves so that they don't have to go to somebody else.
And Sarah, that was one, one clarification I wanted to make. And the other one is to say that when we were starting this and submitted the grant to receive, we, we huddle, what should, what should be the, what, what, what should be the designs? Okay, we can do this, that, and the other. Then we realized, that's really probably the wrong approach. The right, better approach would be to start smaller. Ask districts and schools, what do you need? And then let's design what we can do around. And so that's been a part of the process of being a little bit slower and strategic. So we thought, okay, let's, let's start in North County. And that ended literally huddling with the district superintendents and realized what Santa Maria need, joint needs is something different for Santa Maria Bonita, which is different from Orchid. So then the huddle becomes individual things. And that's why you saw the first beginning, Mr. Howell, as far as your question. And then it was like, okay, let's begin to expand. And again, huddling, even the Seven Valley superintendents.
Yes.
But then, nope, we have to have individual, you know? And so I, I say that to say how much I appreciate the customization. We can't do it all. Four million, really five million over five years is not a lot to do all this work because it's got a million dollars a year and all the people that you're hiring. So how do we maximize the funding and the people to support and, and help the puzzled pieces come together with what districts are already providing with what we can do? So wanted to tell you about that design as well.
Mary Ellen, thank you so much for the presentation.
Mary Ellen, thank you. Wonderful presentation. And also wonderful work that you're doing. I applaud that you're in junior high schools. I think that, if anything, ten-year high kids.
Junior Fortes. The junior highs seem to be where everybody wants us to be, too, is that right?
Yeah, and when we get, later on, when we talk about our high school graduation diplomas, they all took a turn in junior high school. And so I'm, the target is correct. Thank you, Mary Ellen.
Okay, now on to the consent agenda. Items nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Would you approve the consent agenda? Second.
And comments?
I would like to pull item number nine, the June second minutes from our consent agenda because that, I don't have a page number for you, but I, regarding remanding the board policy, five-one-one-seven for the inter-district transfer. I had submitted six criteria to add to the policy, and I think that was distributed to the board. And I would like to have those, that criteria included in the minutes. Just because I'd love to track what was approved and what wasn't approved. That's, so amending the minutes for June second, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, let's start with, and agendas items ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen. Joe, you usually have a comment about basically the bonus.
I do. I grabbed the letters to each and gave them to Anna with a copy of the file. And I have a letter to each here if anyone wants to see them. I also, jumping, I, I want to be sure that I don't vote on the minutes for the meeting I did, but I, I don't know if they're combined or not. It's just a little clarification.
We will abstain from the ninth. Okay, so you want to amend your motion to make it items ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, and then do the adjusted.
I still, I still.
And second. Okay. All those in favor of approving items ten through thirteen?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain on number ten.
And you abstain on number ten. And now number nine, do we have a motion to amend the minutes for June second as requested by Michelle? And do you have a second? Very good. The second. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And now on to our action items. The first one is a resolution having to do with a joint use of classroom agreement. And we have a copy of it in our packet. And I believe we have someone here for questions.
I, I knew that Bill, which way is easier to answer any questions specifically, I can answer any questions as well, should the board?
I would move to approve number two. Second.
All those, oh, roll? Call? Well, discussion, yes. And roll call.
Okay, Mrs. Cardy?
Aye.
Mrs. Dany?
Aye.
Mrs. DeWort?
Aye.
Mrs. Frost?
Aye.
Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Dr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Aye.
And the next action item is another just in case so that we have it in our back pocket if we need to have a teleconference meeting between now and a month from now.
Second.
Comments? Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll call a roll call.
Mrs. Cardy?
Aye.
Mrs. Dany?
Aye.
Mrs. DeWort?
Aye.
Mrs. Frost?
Aye.
Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Dr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask that we go to closed session to handle inter-district attendance of the appearing. And there will, we would like to have all, all the reporters because we don't want to take this part of the meeting.
All right, you were all here, were you not? Do I really need to announce the decision?
Oh, yes.
Okay, formality. Okay, I just gave my piece of paper away. Here, here's what the motions were.
You have to announce the vote.
Does it have to be by roll call or just number?
The, the number of the student number?
No, the.
Five to two.
Four to two or whatever. Five to two, or do we have to go by name? It's a roll call. And I will call on Ms. Anna if she would recap our decisions on T twenty-two oh two and T twenty-two oh three.
Okay, so the motion for student T twenty-two oh two was to uphold the decision of the Glade Union School District and deny the inter-district transfer request for student T twenty-two oh two. It was passed by a vote of four, five to two, excuse me. And you want me to say each board member's name and their vote?
Yes.
Okay, so Mrs. Cardy voted aye, Mrs. Dany voted aye, Mrs. DeWort voted no, Mrs. Frost voted aye, Mr. Howell voted aye, Dr. McDougal voted aye, and Mr. Porter voted no. For student T twenty-two oh three, the motion was also to uphold the decision of the Glade Union School District and deny the inter-district transfer request for student T twenty-two oh three. And the roll call vote was Mrs. Cardy voted aye, Mrs. Dany voted aye, Mrs. DeWort voted no, Mrs. Frost voted aye, Mr. Howell voted aye, Dr. McDougal voted aye, and Mr. Porter voted no, and the motion passed.
Thank you very much. Now we have a couple of information items. We have the personnel report. Was there, were there, are there any questions about the personnel report? And we have the infamous Williams Valens Wale Uniform Complaints Quarterly Report with nothing but goose eggs, which is great. We like that. And now on future agenda items, I, I'm going to go first here. We, in the past, we've actually named some of the items because we wanted to do them. Right now, we really, I guess, don't have much on the list or anything pertinent on the list. So I would like us on a future agenda item to revisit the recording of the board meetings. And, and with that agenda item, I would expect to get a reading from staff on how well it's going, if there's been any feedback, if we can even tell if anyone's listened to it or, you know, whatever has happened. So kind of give a recap and then we can discuss that again. So to be clear, we've recorded two meetings.
Including today.
Including today, correct. I said that wrong. I want to revisit recording the board meetings, not just the audio.
The video recording.
Yeah, just, yeah. I want to recap with the audio and then.
Discuss.
Discuss the video, yeah. So that's my item. Anyone else have items they would like to add to, consider to add to our future agenda? Nope.
Thank you.
All right, then we are adjourned. Our next meeting is August.
If somebody has to move.
I can make the motion to adjourn.
Oh, okay. Peter likes to make that.
Peter can do it.
Yeah. Julie's rubbing. The important part is the time of our next meeting. Think you can handle that?
I, I would move to adjourn until our next meeting on August the fourth at sixteen fifteen in the afternoon. Four fifteen, P. M.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're done.